Hello Brother Steve, I want to share this disclaimer with you upfront. The views and opinions of my broadcast are not necessarily of Brother Steve Harris, or the people I interview on this broadcast. This broadcast is independently produced by myself, Brother Steve Harris, and is not an official broadcast of the Church of God in Christ. I do not serve in any capacity in the Church of God in Christ for this particular broadcast and interviews of candidates at this particular time. Celebrating forty years in the entertainment and broadcast industry, and we do our very best to continue to operate in integrity in all that we do and that we say. If you go to our website, you'll see these websites. There's a disclaimer on our website that shares with everyone that it is not an official website of the Church of God in Christ. I basically share information as a journalist to give people an opportunity to be heard, seen, and viewed. Hope that you enjoyed our broadcast. Hope that it's a blessing to you and it blesses others and all that we do and say. God bless you.
From Hollywood.
Yo DJ.
Are you done mixing yet?
Your DJ has only just begun.
Hello, I'm Bishop T.D. Jakes and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
Hey, it's Latoya Luckett and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
This is Rans Allen and you're watching my friend, Brother Steve TV.
Hey y'all, this is Landry Johnson and you're watching Brother Steve TV.
Hi.
This is Rodney Dogg, child jerking.
This is Chris Tucker.
This is Kirk Franklin.
And you are watching Brother Steve.
You're watching Brother Steve.
Brother Steve TV.
Stay tuned.
From Hollywood, California, you're watching Brother Steve TV.
It's a praise jam party, yup, it's going up. Brother Steve, the sunshine bear, that's what's up. Him and his crew, they really making stations nervous. Brother Steve deliver hits like the postal service. Must I remind you of his credentials? Brother Steve go hard, he go large, he's monumental. That's it, it's over, a finality. Call the pallbearers, the station buried in Cali. Three sixty, going hard for the Lord, it's the praise jam party. Brother Steve is in charge. For all the hot exclusives and the brand new styles. Tune in every week on Just Your Radio Dials. To the most unpredictable show on the airwaves. From the land of the stars to the home of the breaks. We go hard for the Lord. It's how we represent, we don't apologize for it.
Brother Steve and the Church Family Channel, we're so glad to see you today. Wanting you on tonight. It's a wonderful night, we're glad to have you here, all that and then some and much, much more. Woo, what a, you know, it's a busy night here in Los Angeles and Hollywood, California. Let me show how busy it is, okay? The World Series is going on right now. The Laker game is going on right now. The concert of SoFi is going on right now. The event at the other stadium is going on right now. About five mega events going on in LA right now. Where am I? Right here in the studio with you. That why I ain't gotta be in that traffic, burning my gas. Cause you know the good thing about burning gas? When you burn it, you gotta go to the fill-up system to fill up. But the other good thing is that when you're out of gas, you gotta get connected. And I'm connected to one of the most brilliant women in the Church of God in Christ. The one and only Mother Sandra Jones. Mother Jones, how you doing tonight?
I'm doing good, how are you?
I'm good, Mother Jones, I'm glad to see you. Well, I'm just gonna kick off. How are things in Flint going for you right now?
They're going good. Everything is, everything is going good, just really, really busy. We've had a very busy week. This week and last week, it's just, you know, the season's changing and we're moving toward holiday time and summer jobs are no more for people. People just don't have, you know, they can get a summer job and once the summer is over, people are without. So it's kinda like where we step in and we've just really been busy.
You know, that, that is the first person I heard to say that. Say summer's over and summer jobs are over. But you all are doing something to help. The RL Jones Non-Profit Corporation, you, you, I mean, you do so many things. What are some of the things you do outside of the Church of God in Christ? I know you've been featured on national TV and I've seen you with those forklifts. You're not playing around, I mean, don't, don't, don't let the good little fool you now, y'all. She, she get in there, before she tell you to move that box. I guarantee you better move that box quick, she gonna make it happen. What are some of the other things you do civically, Mother Jones, outside of Church of God in Christ?
Well, during the water crisis, we started, I, I formed the RL Jones Community Outreach Center. We're on the campus of Greater Holy Temple, but we're in a totally separate building. We have our own facility Lloyd has blessed us with. And we have closed closet. And last week, that's what we were doing. We worked with the Interfaith group and it was about five different churches. And we supplied the clothing and everything for them and come together. And we had over 5,000 people that came through the five churches to pick up warm clothing and boots and quilts and blankets and for all age groups, infants, toddlers, youth, men, women. And we worked for, let's see, I think it was Friday from nine to five. And then again Saturday, supposed to have been from nine to 12. We, we wound up being there until about two o'clock because the lines were just so long for people just to get clothing. So we're not even talking about what we do Monday through Thursday. And Monday through Thursday, we are a help center. On Thursdays, yesterday, we had about 375 cars lined up. Yeah, for food and, and the interesting thing about that, people have two and three families in a car. Because some people don't have cars or some people can't carry the groceries or whatever. So we are actually feeding in one day anywhere between six and 700 people. And that's not including the number of people in each of these families. So we just, we have, we work with an estate sale company. Matter of fact, we work with about four or five of them. So people stop, they pick up the furniture. And of course, let me share something with you before I go any further. I'm not gonna give anything to anybody that I wouldn't want.
Whoa.
Or I wouldn't want someone in my family to have. So they're not getting nasty hand-me-downs.
Yes.
They're getting slightly used garments. And then in the estate sales, of course, you know, a lot of the furniture is Duncan Fife and you know, the French Provincial and different, yeah. Because you know, their estate salespeople pass on and what the estate company cannot sell, they give it to us. And so we have people that come by and the furniture is gone in like an hour and a half. Yes, yes, and that's on Thursdays. And then Monday through Thursday, we partner with Metropolitan Mass Transit Authority. And they come and pick up our workers. And then we deliver food and personal care items to another 1,200 households.
1,200?
Households a week. This is not a month, this is not a quarter, this is not a year, this is a week. So altogether, when you look at what we do on a Thursday, you know, with just the people driving through.
Right.
And then what we do every day during the week, you're, we're probably servicing close to about 2,000 people a week. And then the Lord gave me to work with Job Corps. These young people who have dropped out of school for whatever reason, have not finished high school, are looking for a trade, but you know, they've found themselves, they wanna come back and, and be good people in the, in the community and act community. You know, I've always had a heart, Steve, for the young people.
Yes, you always have.
So I hire them and they come in and work three to four hours every day. I hire anywhere between three to seven because that's about as much as they will allow out at a time. And so we'll have a shift in the morning, we'll have a shift in the afternoon. And then on Thursdays, like yesterday, I have about eight to 10 who will work with us. And we pay them, we're not asking those kids to volunteer and they need that money. They need you to pour into them, they need to feel needed, that they're doing something important, that they're learning something. And the biggest thing for me is watch your tone. Cause that could be you in that car.
That's right, that's right.
That's needed. That could be you whose house we're having to deliver to. So watch your attitude and watch your tone. You know, don't ever make people feel bad because we're having to help them.
Mother Jones, I'm, uh, let me just stop and play this real quick and, and we'll be right back.
Okay, okay.
Has evolved into the one-stop spot for those in need in One Flint Community. And as the church's ministry reaches more and more people and shows us they're now growing into a bigger space.
We started off really with just this little side right here. Next thing I know, I was enlarging, taking over more of the church and we got this side right here. And today, looked like we're gonna get that side over there.
Several people were hard at work today making that happen. Sandra Jones is the Executive Director of the RL Community Outreach Center at Greater Holy Temple in Flint. She says the Catherine's Closet of Hope has served 4,600 people since the doors opened in October 2016.
I know what it means to not have. And I'm so thankful to Carriertown that I don't have to say no.
Jones says they asked the Greater Holy Temple to open a closet shortly after they became a water distribution site. Carriertown is the drop-off site for all donations.
Just pick up a pair of pants, look at these, they look brand new. You see, this is the way the merchandise comes to us.
The closet is open Monday through Thursday. Jones says customers can return every two weeks. Everything is free, they only ask that people sign in. On Thursdays, the back parking lot turns into a help center, offering bottled water and food among other community resources.
We could not make it without United Way, Genesee Health Systems, Food Bank of Eastern Michigan, Carriertown.
Helping a side of the city Jones believes has been forgotten.
There's no grocery store, there's no schools, there's no community outreach. There is nothing over on this side but us. And we're not going away. We're gonna be here for the community.
In Flint, Ann Parrett, ABC 12 News.
The media don't lie.
I didn't know you had.
Oh yeah, I got that, I do my homework, Mother Jones, the, the media, you're doing the work. Some people are talking and they know, oh yeah, we going by leaps and bounds. You're leaping and bounding on the floor, you ain't, you ain't doing much. You doing the work, that's the video, that's the ABC news station. That proves you making it happen. I'm not gonna start rolling videos out I got about you, Mother Jones. But you're doing the work. How is it, how is that possible? You do that and then you never miss a beat with the Church of God in Christ as a national veteran trustee board member. Let's talk about that.
Just God, it's, it's just, it's just a God move, that's, that's all I can say. Let me say this, it, it's, um, I'm just full, I didn't realize. We, to be, and we've outgrown that area now. So we had to build a building for the closed closet.
I mean, the fact that you said, we don't have grocery stores, we don't have this, this is all people have in this area, it's all they have.
And, and this last Friday, what I, I didn't share with you, we gave almost 70 vaccinations in a day and a half. Do you realize that that's more vaccinations than the actual clinics themselves do in a month? But I have a little secret. My secret is, you get your vaccination, I'll give you a gift.
Wow.
Mm-hmm. And that, and that gift was something that they needed, something that they really wanted in their households. We've given away refrigerators, air conditioners, power tools. I mean, you name it and we've given it away. And yes, I bribe them, but I'd rather that they be healthy and whole. And you know, it's, it's, uh, the church for me comes natural.
Okay.
And it's just who I am and what I do, does that make sense?
It makes good sense, it comes naturally, what you do.
And so thank the Lord, because of Bishop J.O. Patterson Senior and Sylvia Law, Bishop W.L. Porter. They are the reason that I really started working in the national church back in the, in the eighties, in the early eighties. Mm-hmm.
You were a pioneer with that, even with the phone system.
Well, the Church of God in Christ had six-button phones. And because of my secular background, working for, at the time, I was working for the Bell System. And I had been, when the Bell System had to diversify from AT&amp;T, AT&amp;T, and I'm not bragging, but AT&amp;T took its top 3% of people who worked in marketing and other areas across the board. And I was in that top 3%. And so it, it afforded me to have a better understanding, it gave me a better education. It exposed me more, I traveled all over the country. And when I saw what Bishop W.L. Porter at that time was trying to do, and he was sharing with me how the long-distance bills were high and, you know, just different things. So based on my secular background, I said, Bishop, why don't I make a proposal to you? He said, can you? I said, yes. He said, alright, come on up here and see what we got. And I did, and I put the first PBX system in to the Church of God in Christ. That's at, matter of fact, it was at Chiswick and also at Mason Temple. I put the first 800 service in. They didn't even know about 800 service during that time. And that's one of the reasons that the long-distance bill was so high is because the General Board and different ones that lived in other parts of the country, you know, they had long-distance bills and they would send their bills to the trustee board and to different, yes, because most of the business that they did, you know, was for the church.
Yeah.
And so it cut their bills, bill down tremendously. And it was so funny, I put fax machines in their homes because they were having to FedEx different papers that they had to sign and so forth. So when I put the fax machines into the homes, cause you know, that was before we had the cell phones and you could take a picture and just send it, right? So it was so funny, I never shall forget Bishop Chandler Owens. He was like, what is this? And his secretary, Jeannie Coles, had to explain to him what the fax machine was. Once he knew what it was, it was on. But he, he wasn't wanting it initially. But once he understood, you know, what it was and that it cut down on the bills and everything. And, and this was before, you know, he became the Presiding Bishop. He was, yeah, he was just on the board. But my experience has really been, it was, it's been a God move. And I, I would, if I had anything to say to anyone, take your secular experience and apply it to the church.
Wow.
See, you don't have to get paid for every single thing you do.
Wow.
And back then, we didn't. Back then, you just committed yourself and your service to this church. And, and consequently, when you do that, there's a love, a genuine love that comes for the church and its people. And you began then to do what you feel is best. And you know, during that time, I just matriculated into other areas, placed on several committees, General Assembly. Bishop J.O. Patterson Jr. put me on the commissions. I was a commissioner for the General Assembly. And the only woman, I think I've said this before, the only woman in the Church of God in Christ who has ever certified the house. Let's face it, you know, this is a man's world.
Wow.
And, but they had the confidence in me and I was there. So you, you can talk all you want to, but where are you? Where are you? You know? And, and so for me, I was there, they could depend on me. And, and my word stood for something and it does today. You've gotta stand for something. And then you've gotta be willing to take down. You've gotta be willing to adjust. And you know, I'm a very strong woman.
Strong.
I'm a very strong woman, but guess what? I worked with very strong men.
Yeah.
Who, and the good news is, they could appreciate my knowledge, my experience, my enthusiasm, my love for the church. And I was a daughter of the church. My father was Bishop Frank Walter Smith out of Dallas, Texas. And he was known and loved, you know, my mother was brought up in the church. Church, the Church of God in Christ is all I know. Now, I'm not saying to you that I don't know and have not studied and understand other religions, but this is me, this is who I am.
Who you are.
That's it, I don't intend to be nothing else.
You, you've got so much great experience and you even have your hands of expertise into the Church of God in Christ coaching stores. Oh, look who just logged on, our dear friend, Elder Pastor Don Featherstone.
How you doing Pastor Featherstone?
We interviewed him the other night about his new books and now he's in Hawaii with the Hawaii jurisdiction convocation going on this week in Hawaii.
Okay.
Yeah, the Hawaii's, the Hawaii jurisdictions on their convocation tonight, but.
Well, I'm at the publishing house because of Bishop Blake.
Wow.
Bishop Blake, when he became the Presiding Bishop and he put me on the board of the publishing house. But I never shall forget when he became the Presiding Bishop. Remember when we had all of that memorabilia that had Kojic, 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 Kojic? And it was about $750,000 worth of merchandise. And when Bishop Blake saw me get rid of that merchandise and make some money from it, he was like, uh-oh. Let me see what else he could do.
The 100-year celebration stuff, that stuff was everywhere.
Do you know that I still today have some of the Mason dolls?
Really?
Mm-hmm, I'm not giving them up either.
What?
I do, I sure do. Mm-hmm, that's our heritage, you know?
Yeah.
And so from there, I was placed on the publishing board, you know? And I have to say, when your heart is open and you're willing, God will give you visions. But you've gotta be able to walk into the visions. You've gotta be able to roll with the, the good times and the bad times. Because like I said, being a woman, you can truly understand that, and a strong woman, you know, I've had to step back, but I never stopped. I just kept going and I've learned so much.
Let me ask you this, Mother Jones, what do you, what, what? A lot, a lot of people running for trustee board, a lot of people, you know, you know, oh, I'm trustee board, I'm running for trustee. Yeah, okay, but you are a veteran member. What are some of the main characteristics people look for in their Church of God in Christ trustee?
Integrity.
Whoa.
Integrity. And, and they wanna know, what have you done in this church?
Wow.
We can all talk about our education and, and we can all, and I, if I were to sit here right now and talk to you about my secular work, I worked for AT&amp;T for 25 years. I'm the only person in the state of Texas, period, who was promoted to Baskin Ridge, New Jersey, which was the headquarters back in the eighties. I'm the only one that they sent. And my certification papers and all of that come from the top 10 schools. We can all talk about that.
Yes ma'am.
In today's environment, not back in my dad and my mother's environment, no. But the majority of the baby boomers had that opportunity because of affirmative action. So everybody's talking about their degrees and what they, and I'm gonna say, hey, 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 but you got it on our backs. Right? So, but the key is, what have you done since you've been in this church? You, yes, you may have all these degrees, but that's for you.
Watch out now.
But what have you done in your local church? What have you done in your jurisdiction? Did you feel the need to further your education theologically? Did somebody give you your missionary license or did you go to school for them?
Wow. Wow.
So people are looking for integrity, they're looking for honesty. They're looking for somebody that they feel is gonna give them a correct and a true answer. And if it's not, just simply say, listen, you know what, I didn't do that one right. Let me go back, let me revisit it and I'll get back to you. And then do that.
Wow.
So we talk about the budget a lot, but the budget is not the only thing.
That's true.
That the Board of Trustees does, it's just a question. Because we, let me, let me say this, our budget cannot be any better than the information that's given to us. Now I know I've hurt somebody, but if, if you're supposed to come in to the Board of Trustees and sit down and let's go over your budget, but you don't show up or you don't give us the information in advance. or you don't give us the information in advance, then yes, we're gonna stand up there on that floor. And a lot of the questions, we will not be able to answer. And because of the integrity of the board, they don't say Jack Black didn't give me the information I need. So we have to share and look like it's our fault. But that's the integrity of the people on our board.
Team effort.
Team, you must work as it is no I. Bishop Jones often says, there's no I in team. And 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 the, and uh it's so funny, uh you, we're talking about this, cause sometimes I'll say to him, I said, Bishop, you know, where's the Board of Bishops? Y'all could just stand up for us. He said, Sister Jones, there are some things that you do in the back room. And I'm like, you know me, that the radical side of me is like, no, 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 we need you to stand up and fight for us on that floor. You know, and he said, I'm fighting. And that's sometimes the same way that the people feel that we're standing before them, that we're not fighting for them, but we are.
That's a power couple. You have the um veteran Board of Trustees member, then the vice president, the vice chairman of the Board of Bishops are in the same house.
Oh, I hadn't even thought about that, yeah. Yeah, he's he's uh Bishop Jones was the first elected um chairman of the Board of Trustees for twenty-five plus years. And and uh then, and he is now the first vice chair to the Board of Bishops. He's a great um a great mentor for me. And 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 that's what I think it's it's so good. The Board of Trustees, we are also in trust of the properties that is um given to us by the General Board. We, out of all of the properties, if the General Board decides that we we want to manage this property separately or in a different way, that's not given to the Board of Trustees, okay? So you know, when people see property sometime, I say, well, what are the trustee board doing? That property may not be entrusted to us.
How many properties does Church of God in Christ own that you can probably can talk about?
Ah, I don't know how many they own. Downtown, we have um you've got the bookstore two seventy-five, which is the old Convention Services building. We have uh from three hundred to three um oh eight, three oh eight, and then we pick back up to three sixteen, seventeen and eighteen, three sixteen and eighteen, which is the old Russell Hardware Store. Um and it is now called the Blake Building and that was officially passed by the General Assembly. And that's really, I know I'm digressing a little bit, but that's really why I wanna be back on the board. I wanna complete the work that I have begun.
Yes ma'am.
And and when I started with the board, our chairman, Bishop uh Dwight Walls, saw something in me and trusted me. He didn't know at the time that I had a degree in real estate. He did not know that I lived in Houston, you know, that I was going for my broker's license, but that's how God works. And he placed me over capital asset management. And um our buildings at that time downtown were empty. And the one that was occupied, they were supposed to have been getting like seven hundred dollars a month. And they weren't even getting that. Today, those buildings are occupied and um we lease those buildings now for seventeen dollars per square foot.
Mother Jones, you made a great impact in the Church of God in Christ. You made a good impact in Christian as well. You just made a great impact for your community. Wanna give out you, give a shout out to your son Billy, congratulations.
He's pastoring. He's pastoring. But that's what I want to see um Brother Steve. For our young men and our young women to walk into their calling. I was blessed. God placed me, like I said, with Bishop J O Senior and Bishop J O Junior and Bishop W L Porter, Sylvia Law and um they they saw a lot in me and then of course Bishop uh Ford and Bishop Owens, all the presiding bishops have have um have kept me moving forward. And that's what we must do with our young people. Remember back then, I was a young woman. And so we've got to be able to do that exact same thing today. And as you know, even with you, when we hit, when I started with the publishing house, come on Brother Steve, I need you here. I need you to be working with me. You see, and and it's not always about uh you, meaning it's not important that everybody knows that is, that I'm doing it. What's important is they see you and look at you today.
Yeah, we're grateful.
Also own the property uh on uh Second Advance, which is downtown. You know where the Chisca is? Okay, it's it's catacornered to the Chis- Chisca and we lease a lot of our properties out uh at night for the, right across uh from the FedEx Forum. And um I've spoken with um administration and the trustee board and we're all a hundred percent, let me tell you something. We gotta make this church some money. We can't keep just getting it in offerings. And so if we can put up a parking garage, think about it. Right now, if there's a game, I don't know, so forgive me, how much um Superintendent Milton uh Timmons and them charged for parking, but I know it's not no more than ten fifteen dollars. You know what I'm saying? But if you've got a parking garage there, that parking garage makes money for you then every single day. Every single day. And by being by the Chisca, when they have company, people can park in there. I mean, it's a lot of different things that we can do. And uh our building is down in Lexington. We just Superintendent uh Timmons is so funny. He leased one of my buildings down there for a little bit less than what I would have leased it for. But he saw an opportunity to do something for the city, the people in that community, as well as for the church. You know, sometimes you gotta, you gotta um look at, not just from a monetary side, but you gotta look at the whole. Cause now that we wanna do some other things down in Lexington, that opens doors and that lets them know that the Church of God in Christ is flexible.
Can you, before I release and let you speak to the delegates directly, can you share some of the projects you've already done as trustee board members and you can say, that's my stamp, that's my hands on that one?
My hands is all downtown and every piece of property that we own. Every piece of property. We have brought in, uh I was first elected in uh twenty twelve. And like I said, those properties were not uh leased. Today, I have probably uh seen more than three point four, three point five million dollars for the church. Now let me share with you real quickly, when you, before you say, well, what do you do with that money? That money goes back into the properties, all of our properties. Mason Temple, when you see it remodeled and the bathrooms fixed up and the bathrooms changed and all of those various things that you see, that's the money that is used and you don't then have to go to parishioners and say all the time. Things that are done and you don't know, well, where'd they get the money from? That money is coming because we've got our properties downtown leased. That money is coming because we've done it correctly. We've got leases and we actually are are able to reinvest. That's not money that goes into the coffers where you say uh, oh, they got three point five million. No, 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 no. It helps to take care of Lexington. Why? Because there's not a lot of income coming into Lexington. It helps to keep the properties up. It helps to pay employees. It helps to keep the bathrooms done. It helps the air conditioning, heating system, all of those things. So those, those are some of the things that I have done. However, it's time for us to step up and make three sixteen, make it make some money on its own because it cost us almost a half a million dollars. See, we couldn't tear that building down. And down, in downtown Mem- uh Memphis, you can't tear it down because all of the buildings are connected to each other. So if you tear one down, that means the building next door to it somehow or other, it it won't have a wall. So we have had to completely renovate it, bring it up to code. So now it's time for us to to invest in that building so that it can make money for us.
It just makes sense to me. You know what you're doing, you've been there. Let's continue the work, let's continue the vision. So you can complete the legacy you have. So when you decide to not run again, whatever year that'll be.
This is it. If, I wanna complete, uh Brother Steve, I'm seventy-six years old. Yes, sir. I have a birthday uh right after we come back from Memphis. I'll be seventy-seven.
Seventy-six?
Yes, sir. And I had really started not to run this year. And um my husband said to me, he says, uh, have you filled out your application? I said, no. He said, well, why not? I said, well, I'm 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 not gonna run them. I'm 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 getting too old. Let the young people do it. And he said, um, did you pray about it? And I stopped, I said, no. Every other time, I had prayed, but I made up my mind based on my age. And based on the fact that I would like for young people to also have an opportunity, right? And so he said, have you prayed about it? I said, first time, I said, no. And he didn't say no more. He walked on off. And um I had to say, Lord, forgive me. I need you to forgive me. And I began right then to apologize to God for making a decision about his work, his people. And what he had allowed me to do, I'm gonna just do it on my own. So I had to say, I'm sorry. Sorry, Lord. And the next thing I knew, and and it was almost time for the uh for it to close out.
Yes ma'am.
But I went ahead and I prayed about it and I filled out the application. And that's why I'm running, because the Lord told me to do it. And don't you find it interesting, Brother Steve, that Bishop would ask me the same week that it was closing for applications? Same week, and it might have been, if you would look at it, I, 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 you know, I'm getting old. It might have been almost the next, the next day or so. I just barely made it and and time to get my references and the things, you know, that you need.
Well, Mrs. Jones, we said we was gonna talk about fifteen, twenty minutes and we going forty-five.
Are we really?
Cause you just got some, I could just sit here and listen to you.
Thank you.
So Mother Jones, I'm gonna ask you to, I'm gonna step off camera and allow you to say whatever you wanna say to delegates watching the broadcast right now.
I wanna say thank you so much for watching and listening to me on this evening. I know the hour is late, but I feel led to ask you to please let me finish the work that I have begun. Yes, uh we have brought in more than three million dollars in in our properties and what we do, especially in the Memphis area. Yes, we have used that monies for the benefit and the betterment of the church. However, I wanna take it a little bit higher up. I wanna help the presiding bishop reach his goals and his objectives. I wanna finish the work while Bishop Blake is still alive. The Blake Building, I want him to be able to see his name on that building. You voted for it. You approved it. Now let's complete the work. Let's finish what we have begun. God bless you and I thank you so very much for this opportunity.
Woo, you gonna make me get pissed off, hollering, screaming and running.
Bishop Blake asked me, he says, Sandy, when we gonna finish the building? And I was like, we gonna do it, Bishop. And when I told Bishop Shear, he said, let's do it. He said, let's do it. So I just need to be able to finish the work.
I was with him Sunday night at church. It was our first service in our Family Life Center. And we were, and Bishop and I were sitting in the front row together. And the church is just missing. Young lady walked up to Bishop. And she said, he, he don't remember me. I said, watch your tone. He don't, he don't, he he don't remember me. I I I know he don't, and I'm just gonna say hi. I said, watch your tone, watch yourself. He walked up to her and bent down, shaking, hi Bishop Blake. You don't remember me, but I said, you don't wanna do that. You don't remember me, but I just wanted to say hi to you. He said, oh, okay. How's that car doing you got? Oh my gosh, he's so sharp. He ain't forgot. He sat there and rattled her history off. And I sat there, I just said, and everybody turned around, we was like, we tried to tell you. Bishop Blake has found so much of so many people, it's unbelievable.
When he said to me, he called me, Sandy, when we gonna finish the building, the Blake building? And it just tore me up. You know, uh it it tore me up. It really did. And and Brother Steve, I wanna thank you. Thank you for uh uh you know, giving me this opportunity to tell my story. And to let the people see my heart. And I let Bishop Blake, let him see this so he can see I'm working for him. We're gonna try to finish the Blake building.
He just got you a little reminder, you know, he give you those little reminders. Get in your car and sit and just get yourself together so he he can say a word so quick, you just be like, uh. Mother Jones, you're the best. Thank you for everything. Thank you for all you do for the Church of God in Christ. We're looking forward to seeing you at convocation at the uh coaching stores. You always have a hub. People can always find you working at coaching stores as well.
On another assignment, we've got, we've, what is Bishop um Bishop Shear's theme? And and um we do, we just need to get busy doing it.
Tell Bishop and Billy hello. Bishop and Billy.
Yeah, I'm so, I'm so proud of both of them and um, you know, it's time, that's why I said, I'm, I wanna pull some of these young millennials along with me. So that they too, when I go off the scene, the work won't have to start all over again. They can just keep moving forward like I did.
She gonna go off the scene and retire herself. From Hollywood, California, Brother Steve, me and Mother Jones, we gonna talk a little bit more, but y'all ain't gonna hear us talk. Break me up and man, we both of us have been crying. All right, Mother Sandra Jones, reelect to National Board of Trustees. From Hollywood, California, and Brother Steve, have a great night.